Carlos Avia.
Here.
Angela Stuckaty.
Kevin Marin.
Here.
Leah Canover.
Here.
We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to proceed with our approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting of minutes approved. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the first closed session of September 24th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the second closed session of the September 24th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we don't have public comment. There'll be a point where we may have later, we'll return to that, we'll proceed with the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Approval of WHS and WJHS student tour.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia? Oh, sorry. Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes. And now we'll move to our information and discussion. We'll have the summer school opportunities meet.
How do I get it to present on the screen? I...
It's magic.
Thank you, Booth. Alright, so... So, I'm going to start with the summer updates, summer school updates, and then I'll move into just our goal setting and action planning for this school year. So, over the summer, we had some really great summer student programming. So, in... Oh wow, there's a lot of effects to this that I didn't realize. So, for elementary, we had four different summer programs. So, we had a reading and math June boost, which is like your typical summer school. So, June 3rd to June 20th, it was great for incoming first through fourth grade students with a reading and math focus, and 55 students attended that. We had Jump Start to kindergarten, which was really successful. It was new for this year. It was for a couple days in July, and it was for incoming kindergarten students to really work on some of those kindergarten readiness skills. So, a lot of routines and rituals, SCL focus to get them ready for kindergarten, and then a little bit of reading and math in there as well. And 56 students attended that, which is...
It's more than half the class. Is that more than half of the...
It's more than half the class.
That is amazing.
Pretty amazing.
What's the number for the class?
Say that again.
Do you know the number for the class?
It's around 100. It's like 90 something, I think. Yeah. But 56 students attended, which was amazing, and the feedback from that was really, really great from parents and families. And it was a short program, so it kind of was nice for the kindergartners to really get into the school and get a feel for it before they had their official first day. There were two STEM sessions. The first STEM session was all about computer science and coding, and it was for incoming second and third grade students. 22 students attended that one. And then the STEM session two was for incoming fourth and fifth grade students, all about rockets and electricity, and 17 students attended that. That STEM program every year is always super popular, and the attendance is great for it too, because kids are really excited to go. And then for junior high students, there were three programs for junior high. So, the Reading and Math Rising, 11 days, 3 hours a day in June, for incoming sixth through eighth grade students who were in math and reading intervention. The focus was on reading and math. 51 students attended that program. There was the Compact 8 Math Program, which was self-paced and online, same as last year, and it's for eighth grade students who qualify with an advanced, using an advancement rubric. And this is for kids to make that jump from seventh grade Common Core to Math 1 for their eighth grade year. So, they're able to bypass eighth grade math to go into that advanced coursework. 44 students attended that. And then sixth grade Step Up, 2 days, 3 hours a day in July, and that was for incoming sixth graders, and 31 students attended that.
Is the first, going back to that previous slide, that is it the first one invitation only? The reading and math?
Yes, yes. Bless you. This was new this year. We offered a virtual summer school through IVSA, so Illinois Virtual Schools, I don't know what the A stands for, association. But they offered a virtual summer school, and then we decided to take part in it. And it used iReady, and each kid took an incoming assessment, and it was an individual path of study for each student based on that assessment. And then the kids had the option to join virtually 4 days a week for live sessions in math and reading with a teacher. And then students worked outside of those class times on their individual pathways for about 40-ish minutes a day. This was for incoming kindergarten through, or current, not incoming, kindergarten through eighth grade students who ended last year in that grade level. That was last from June 11th to July 25th. It was available for all students who wanted to take part in it. And then these kids had the option to use their school-issued device for that as well. 43 students total attended, so it was a sprinkle from every grade level. So, kindergarten had 2 students, first grade had 8, second grade had 7, third 7, fourth had 6, fifth grade had 5, sixth grade had 3, seventh grade had 2, and eighth grade had 3 students. A couple parents, quotes at the bottom, you can barely see it, it's really small, but one parent said, "This program was amazing for my student. They couldn't wait to log on and meet their teacher, and they wanted to work on their math and reading throughout the week." And then similar comments from parent of a first grader, second grader, and fifth grader. So, that was new this year. High school students, there were five programs, very similar to last year. The credit recovery program is 12 days, 3 hours a day, and it's for those 10th through 12th grade students who are significantly credit skilled efficient, and it gives kids opportunities to recover their credit from their failed courses so that they can be on track to graduate. And 14 students attended that. There was the Jump to AP Geography, which is 2 days, and it's really for any students enrolled to take AP Human Geography, and it's designed to expose them to the expectations and some of the content. And 35 students attended that. There's a Transitions in English and Math, 12 days, 3 hours a day, and it's for any kids enrolled in literacy workshop and/or math IA. 26 students attended that. And then there was the Summer Bump, Honors Math Pre-Calculus Class, 10 days, 3 hours a day. It's for 9th through 12th grade students looking for support and enrichment, and really helps them maximize their success at high levels so they can participate in more rigorous coursework. 35 students attended that. And then Freshman Orientation, 90% of the students attended freshman orientation for freshmen and then new students to the high school, and really helps prepare them for a smooth transition. This program was really cool over the summer. This was new, the Dual Summer School for Elementary Students. Edith really created this program for dual students, for kindergarten through seventh grade students enrolled in the Dual Language Program. It was an 8-day program, and there were about 40 students who participated, and it was really aimed to enhance their Spanish language skills and to explore some cultural richness. The coolest thing about this was they did a couple field trips, and it was a field trip within the community, and kids had some immersive experiences that reinforced their language learning. And yeah, that was one of the field trip locations. But the kids had a blast. In the video, the video of the field trip was super fun.
It was.
Yeah, very cool. But that was the update on the summer programming. Do you have any questions about that?
No, and just a note, that the Salta Adelante was the same day as, or the same week as the sixth grade step up. I think there were some kids that we had to make some choices.
Okay, we'll have to keep that in mind for next year.
Just something to think about.
Keep that in mind when we're planning for next year.
It was either the sixth grade step up or it, so...
Okay, that's good to know.
So, I think that might have affected some of those sixth grade numbers, a little bit, not by a lot.
It could have, yeah, for sure.
Well, I just want to say, first of all, thank you to Dr. Braun for a great job of putting this all together. All the people who participated from our teachers' boards. Did I say something that offensive? I'm just promoting our summer school program. I'll continue, all wet over here. But, a lot of people don't want to work in the summer. They feel like the summer is time to take off, but, and I will tell you, in the summer 2012, CUSD 201 did not have any summer school program. Nothing. So, to go from that to all this variety, from enrichment to support, to getting kids who struggle through, to helping kids, because I always say, if a student is several grade levels behind in their reading, and we let them take the summer off, shame on us. So, and, thank you to the parents who supported their students, to the students who did the smart thing by continuing to learn, to the teachers who said, "I could use a break, but I'm going to give a little bit more," to the administrators who put this together. It's, for a little district to have this many options in summer school, and we're hitting the whole continuum, from enrichment to support to unique opportunities, it's really a source of great pride. So, great job. I want to primarily, because it is not easy getting some of our teachers that work their tails off from August through May, and then they come back and do more in the summer. I really want to appreciate them.
Absolutely. So, now we're going to move on to our 201 goals and action plans. So, that's another big part of our summer, is the administrative team gets together and we really look at the previous year, and then we create goals and action plans based on the previous year and where we want to go moving forward. So, these are our big goals for the school year. I'm not going to read every little thing on here, but they're based on, so we had similar goals last year, and we just kind of upped them this year because we made a lot of growth last year, and I know Jack wants to talk a little bit about that. But last year was a really amazing school year, and our kids learned a lot, our staff are absolutely amazing. So, then this year, we're just upping it a little bit to make sure that we're always continuously improving, and we're always on the path to making ourselves better and ensuring that all of our students have opportunities for high levels of learning. So, we have goals around math proficiency, but we also have goal around our math growth, ensuring that our students are growing. Same with ELA. We're always working on improving our professional learning community, so that's a goal for this school year and always. And then chronic absenteeism is a big goal for us as well.
Where did we finish last year with that number?
Which one?
Chronic absenteeism.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Chronic absenteeism.
District-wide, around 8.5% average between the four buildings. So, the junior high was approximately 6%. Miller was about 8, and then Manning and the high school came around 9, 10. So, aggregate, somewhere around 8%, where the state average is...
I don't know that yet.
Conservatively, 30%.
What was it for our district the prior year? Do you have just a general number in your head? Was it like 12, was it 15?
It was pretty high. I think Miller alone was 25%.
Miller was 25, the junior high was 20, Manning was...
So, all double digits.
All double digits. An average of 20 down to an average of below 10.
Wow. And we're shooting for an average of 7.5 or less this year.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
What's your slogan again, Jack?
Yeah, no more than 5.
No more than 5, yep.
Yeah.
Attendance matters, no more than 5.
I mean, obviously, definitely had a huge impact, you know, in a year's time, for sure, so...
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, yeah.
So, we're first going to look at Miller in their action plan for this school year, and I'm not going to read everything on here. I can, Miller and Manning are also very similar. So, when I talk about Miller, it's really similar to Manning, and I'm just going to highlight a couple big things on there. So, one big goal for Miller is instruction and instructional planning. So, new frameworks were created, not super new, but just frameworks to structure our day a little bit better to ensure that our kids are having more opportunities to learn at high levels. The master schedule is created to keep those instructional blocks protected, so kids aren't being pulled out of core instruction. Miller and Manning are both having teacher check-in meetings often, so the principals are meeting with staff members one-on-one to have conversations with them, to see what kind of support they need, how they're doing. Instructional planning is a big, intentional instructional planning is a big area of focus for us this school year. We created the end of last year curriculum expectations with our team leaders and with our administrators, and we're following through with those this school year. Miller and Manning both want to revise the MTSS guidelines to ensure that all students are getting what they need. And then Miller wants to do some internal MTSS systems. Each grade level is having four instructional planning days where we're really digging into those standards and looking at what they mean for the students at each grade level and ensuring that we're providing all of our students with high levels of learning. Student engagement is a district-wide area of focus, pre-K through 12th grade. There was training at the beginning of the year on engagement structures, and then throughout the year, there is modeling, and it's already started. So, modeling from our coaches, observing other teachers, doing those engagement structures within the classroom, and our coaches are a big support with that. Math and Number Talks, this school year, they already gave a professional PD on that, and then the coaches are following through to ensure that that's happening. And this, when I say Miller, it's the same for Manning. So, Miller and Manning are doing the exact same thing. This for Miller, the Culture Collaborative Teachers, is a Miller-specific goal, because when they looked at their five essentials, collaborative teachers was not where they wanted it to be, so they were really trying to increase the collaboration with teachers. They added a structured classroom this school year, and they're continuing committees. Miller has committees at least once a month, and they've implemented Classroom Buddies, where kindergarten and first grade kids are working together for reading opportunities and doing activities together. Kindergarten first grade cross-articulation in the building. They have a Staff Member of the Month, weekly staff shout-outs, community involvement, so a PTO partnership, so that's specific to Miller. And then for Miller and Manning both, they're doing data digs and really digging into subgroups in looking at their data from that equity lens. Manning is very similar, so I'm just going to talk to you about what's different from Manning than Miller. So, Manning has included, one of their things that's different than Miller is co-teaching this school year at Manning. And Lindsay did a lot of work on cohorting home rooms, so that it allows for two different types of co-teaching, so special, co-teaching between a special education teacher and a general education teacher, and co-teaching between a general education teacher and an interventionist. And what that allows for is more opportunities for students with disabilities to be serviced in the general education setting, in scaffolds to be provided for them so that they can access the grade level content. And then specials teachers are really embedding some bell ringers in their classroom, that's specific to Manning. And then attendance is similar for both buildings, daily phone calls from the front office. They're really focusing on their attendance data and following through, making sure that they positively recognize students who are coming to school, and they're forming an attendance data team there. For culture and climate at Manning, they're having school-wide monthly assemblies. They have the Manning Way, which is really their Manning Expectations in the building. Manning Mula is their reward system, and then they're doing data dives with attendance and discipline to really dig in. Yeah?
What is the bell ringer in Otis?
Bell ringer is like when you first enter the classroom, like something for the kids to do, and it's tied to literacy and academics that are happening in the classroom. And Otis is just the program that it's...
I know what Otis is.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know what a bell ringer was.
Yep. The junior high, the junior high has a very extensive plan, so I'm just pulling out a couple things from there. Last year, they had a really big plan, and I know we were like, "Okay, are you going to accomplish it all?" And they did. So, they have another plan that's really intense, and they're going for it, so they're super driven. The big ideas, I'm just going to talk about this first box here, because if I talk about everything, it'll be really lengthy. So, big ideas for the junior high, content area literacy with a writing focus. So, what that means is that all teachers in the building, even specials teachers and social studies and science teachers are really going to incorporate, and they started this last year too, but they're incorporating writing into their classroom and reading strategies. All teachers are reading teachers there. Co-teaching is big at the junior high as well, for the same reason at Manning, to provide all of our students with opportunities to be serviced in the general education setting. And then the special education teacher and the general education teacher are working together to scaffold, so our kids have access, to provide access for all of our students. Student engagement, so everyone in the district is working on engagement strategies to ensure that all of our students are talking and having meaningful conversations, and that students really can't hide. They're all part of the learning community. Goal setting and students are setting their own goals, and they're being monitored by themselves, so they have goal cards that they're working towards achieving their goals. In math, they have a new curricular resource that they've been grappling with, and it's been really successful. I was in one of their collaborative team meetings, and they were looking at their first assessment that they gave, and it was amazing, the growth from the pre-test to the post-test. It was pretty incredible. So, the kids are really learning. You know, with a new resource, there's always some struggles, but they're working through them, and they're doing a great job. Intervention, they're really working to create effective interventions based upon what students need, to make sure that no kids are left behind, and they're all getting interventions based on what they need.
I want to take a pause here for just a quick minute. The junior high is probably going to be the most improved school in Illinois. Your unofficial data shows that, wait till the official data comes out October 31st. A cultural shift led to that, but this technical piece is powerful. So, what happens is the teachers in literacy and math, think about this, they address the learning target of the classroom, and then they assess a little bit after midway, and they immediately know where kids are strong and where they need to get stronger, so they enact the intervention right then and there in the classroom. It's a powerful model that Amy and the team have instituted, and, you know, so what? That could be an opinion. Their results are phenomenal. We'll talk about that later, but that's what this front 60, back 20 is. And it's, I don't know how anybody can't do this, where you reassess, it's like any good coach or band director would do. You're in the middle of performance, you observe the students in their performance, you give them immediate, specific feedback, and then you guide them through reteaching, and then immediately, they do what we call Tier 2, which is just reteaching based on specific feedback, and they see immediate gains. Versus a more traditional model where teachers would teach, and teach, and teach, and then assign homework. And then the kids who don't know what they're doing go home at night and try to complete the homework. You get immediate intervention, and the results are off the charts.
So, that explains a little bit more of that front 60, back 20?
Yes.
60 minutes of traditional, not even traditional, it's 60...
Grade level...
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. 60 minutes of grade level, standards-based instruction. So, that's like, and all kids have access to that, and that's where the, if they have a co-teacher in the room, they're ensuring that all kids have access to that grade level content, so they're providing them with support so they can access grade level. And then that back 20 is like the feedback that they've gotten from that front 60, so maybe they gave an exit ticket in the front 60. They're clutching those real quick and saying, "Oh, gosh, these 3 kids, we're going to pull them, and we're going to work on this." So, they're providing that immediate intervention based off of what they saw in that front 60.
That's how you get 25% increase in literacy. It's unheard of.
And then math, they have more math minutes this year, so they're able to do that now in math this school year. So, that'll be, that's really exciting. They're focusing on chronic absenteeism, as they did last year. They did an amazing job with chronic absenteeism. They're really looking at exclusionary discipline data and trying to reduce that by 5% this school year. They do an amazing job of celebrating staff and students. They're going to continue that work. They have a really great, they were touched by, they have a sense of urgency after the equity audit, so they have a big plan that's junior high-specific for the equity piece. They're really looking at specific students and making sure that nobody is left behind. They created an Equity Smarple worksheet. They're doing implicit bias work. Team leaders are really looking at those subgroup data to make sure that they're accountable for every single student. They're working on equity for all, what it looks like for them at the junior high. The redos and retakes is a big focus, that they're ensuring that nobody is left behind, so nobody-left-behind culture, that kids are allowed to redo, kids are allowed to retake. They're working on being culturally responsive, and they've created some student unions to help with this work as well. And then, the high school, last but not least. Some of their big ideas in the high school is celebrating successes through assemblies, collaboratively developing Smaracles within their teams. Mastery Connect is a big, Mastery Connect in ACT is a big area of focus, because they've shifted from SAT to ACT this school year. In Mastery Connect, they want to make sure that all teams in the building, not just ELA and math, are using Mastery Connect. Kagan Structures, which are those engagement structures that I was talking about. Their ACT and AP is their big focus. And data walls, so they are constantly looking at data for F-list, chronic absenteeism, AP, ACT. ACT. It was really cool today, I was able to be in the ELA collaborative team meeting, and I can assure you, after sitting in there, there is not a single kid who was left behind. They, they look at every single student individually to make sure that they're making adequate growth, and then they're creating interventions around what they, what they notice that the kids need. So, I mean, and they know those kids like, super well, so it was really impressive to see today.
Can you speak to just the general feeling with the ACT and with that switch, how teachers and the team leaders are feeling about it?
Yeah, I think, Jack, you could probably talk about that more.
The teams knew the SAT so well.
Yes.
Had it down, but what's the general feeling, I guess?
The teams had familiarity with the previous ACT because they got, were intensely involved in dissecting it and knowing it like the back of their hand, so they could best prepare our kids for success. And then when the state transitioned to SAT, they came to know that as well as any teachers could know it. And now that the state has transitioned back to the ACT, they're diving full in again. It's a challenge because it's a different format, the kids have to take it digitally, online. Just a little small example, like when you're answering a traditional, like standardized test with paper and pen, and you are reading and then answering the questions and marking up your sheet, when it's digital, it's a little harder to scroll sometimes, like you're reading a passage, and then you might have to go to the next portion of that passage. So it provides some challenges that kids have to get acclimated to. It's a very different test than the...
The SAT online last year too.
For the first time, yeah. And statewide, the scores went down significantly, not just, I think it's nationwide, I only know a few states. But that new format is adjustment for kids to deal with, because it's a different way of being assessed.
So to that end, has the district ever looked at online assessment programs, so that they're utilizing something like that on a regular basis?
So elementary is using them often, so Otis is like the program that they use, so all of the assessments for elementary are put into Otis. So they're, they're always taking their assessments on, online.
And then it goes to more traditional paper pencil, middle school and high school?
Middle school, middle school is now on, most of it's online too, with, yeah, with their resources, so middle school, high school.
Well, they're going to take the ACT digitally. Our students take four practice ACTs throughout the course of the year, but they're not just like tests, they're used, and the kids buy into this overall, even though it's a little bit, you know, it demands some energy. But it's not like we just test them, we assess them, so we can give them specific feedback about where they're strong and where they need to get stronger. And they understand that. So we're not just testing them and evaluating them, we're giving the assessment for learning and growth. So they have a series of digital tests to be able to be prepared for when the real one comes.
Yeah. It's just an interesting, because so many schools are adopting digital assessment platforms because they think that is the way that...
Yes.
So much standardized testing is going, and so it makes sense to have that. So, I was just curious.
So they have more familiarity when they are coming to the day.
I think elementary is, IER has been online for a couple of years, so they're, they're practicing with that already. And then Otis, I think Manning has been using, Manning and the junior high have been using Otis for a couple of years now. And then, Jack wanted me to speak to some of our steps in our equity journey.
Before we get to the equity piece, I just want to say very quickly, so when Dr. Braun came in, in July of '23, day one, she had this whole strategic quality review process. She wasn't asked to do that, she just came in proactively and did it. And I'll take credit for recruiting and hiring her, that was brilliant. But she did the upfront work from day one, got the whole team to believe in it, from our admin to our teachers, support staff, the students, and followed through, executed, tracked the data, had strategies, and we were relentless about it. And the most beautiful thing, two things. First of all, the entire team was engaged in that. From the kids to the support staff, teachers, admin, our whole team, district-wide. And then the results were astounding.
Yeah.
So that's the power of teamwork and strategic thinking and follow-through and execution and having SMARCOs is the increases in student learning, which is really most important besides their health and wellbeing.
I know part of that too is just lifting up and enhancing the PLC structure. It was already pretty solid at the high school, but at the middle school and the elementary school as well. I think it was the middle school said that they're assessing with a rubric, are they self-assessing or being assessed by administrators?
For PLC?
Yeah.
Yeah, self-assessing.
Okay.
Yeah, so they did that, actually, they did their first one, I want to say last week, two weeks ago, last week? They did a self-assessment with how their meetings are going, so, yeah.
Just what you pointed out is very important. If the admin is kind of hawking them, it's a different experience. When they're doing self-reflection and self-assessment and self-improvement, it's intrinsically driven. It's a much, and they do it as a team, that's what I think you're referring to. And that is happening. And you can't do that absent student performance information. And our district took a big step forward, because the teachers are collaboratively analyzing student performance and learning from it, and it's informing their teacher, which leads to better student learning.
Yeah. So steps in our equity journey, so we had the equity audit done during the '22, '23 school year. Last school year, the IASB equity training. Then we, in September of this school year, we didn't, we revisited that, and we looked at the equity audit data review with our administrative team. We are continuing data analysis and action planning with a focus on subgroup data to ensure high levels of learning for all. That started, really last year it started, but in August of this year, that was one of our big areas of focus, and we're continuing it throughout this school year and beyond. We want to, we're ensuring that all curricular decisions we're making are being made through an equity lens. And some of those things are the cooperative learning structures, that decision was heavily based in equity, to ensure that all of our students are, are talking and having high levels of, high-level discussions in the classroom, and nobody's able to hide. Co-teaching was an equity decision as well, to make sure that all of our students with disabilities are being serviced in a general education setting, and they're not being taught years below grade level, that they're, they're being provided with scaffolds so they can access grade level content. Where curriculum planning days have been big this year, we've already had two of them for every kindergarten, every team kindergarten through fifth grade, to really dig in deep to our, at our resources, look at our standards, and make sure that we're, we're teaching to the level of the standards. Heterogeneous grouping is, is a big decision for this school year that we made in our grade levels, to make sure that we're not tracking students. So those are some of the curricular decisions that we've made through an equity lens for this school year. In October last week, Dr. Rachel Mahmood came in, and she, we did a World Cafe with her, so that was one of our big district-wide, all of our staff are involved in that professional learning opportunity.
She's the Illinois Teacher of the Year, so she's a practitioner, and it was a focus on equity work.
Yep. And then within that presentation, she had a World Cafe, so where teachers really reflected on where we are in our equity journey, and then there was a survey at the end where every staff member provided input. So she is, as we speak, gathering data from that, and she'll share it with Edith, who's then going to share it with, we're forming a committee, which is, which came out of the equity audit as well, so we're forming a District 201 Committee. And the next steps will be driven by that committee. So the committee is going to take data from that World Cafe, data from the equity audit, and the next steps are going to come from that committee. And that's going to guide our next steps. And then this, these are just some pictures from when Dr. Rachel Mahmood came. It was a really great, it was a really great day.
And I thank you for your, the work being put in, that we're not, you know, we didn't have a meeting or a training and stop there.
Yes.
You see that there are steps being taken each year with students and with staff, so...
It's a great point. The follow-through continues. At the start of every admin meeting we have, we ask the leaders in the building to give us a report on chronic absenteeism, and then on their equity progress. That's how we start every meeting. So we track it, what gets measured gets done, and we're looking at it constantly. And most of the schools have already started proactively, but they are looking at all the data for success for all of our students.
Yep. So it was a whole team effort, and we're off to a really exciting start to our school year, I think.
I did have a question about, I think, the first slide and the new goals.
Sure.
So did we meet all of the old goals?
We met almost every one of them, except for math, our math goals, and we were slightly below in our math goals last year.
With that being said, the growth of our students at Miller was excellent, at Manning exceptional, at the junior high outstanding, the high school had a slight dip, but we project that that'll be something that happens statewide because of the new format of the digital SAT. Still quality scores. So it is, we set very ambitious goals, but the growth was so significant that the preliminary data shows that Manning and the junior high will be exemplary for the first time. So even though we didn't hit all of those targets, we showed so much growth that those two schools are two of the most improved schools in the state.
So we can fairly say that these are not like, this is not necessarily me, but too high. I wouldn't necessarily say that, but...
No, I think, I think they're reasonable. So like, we followed the SMARCOL format, so they're specific, they're measurable, they're actionable, like they're, they're doable. They're stretch, but they're doable. Yeah, we're confident we can hit these goals. Right, Jack?
They're, they're slightly stretch goals. Which is, what's, yeah. But they're ambitious.
Yeah.
They're not ridiculous.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Carla.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we're going to move to our review of monthly financials for August 2024.
For August 2024, the district received roughly $700,000 during the month of August, and spent roughly $1.2 million during that month of August. Through, from July 1st, from the beginning of the fiscal year through the end of August 2024, in total, the district received roughly $1.8 million and spent roughly $2.5 million. This is in line with last year's numbers on revenue and expenditures. And at the next board meeting, we'll see a large influx of revenue based on the property tax. Local property tax is coming in, in September, so we're in line of prior year.
Any questions, Anthony? Okay, with that, we're going to move to our policy second reading, discussion. So basically, this is a chance to have any added discussion at our last meeting with Title, Title IX? We, there are some changes, I don't think they're huge changes, but we were given recommendations how that policy is updated, so this is just a chance for any other questions, if there are any, or any notes, discussions, or comments. All right. And then we'll move to our State of Illinois Fiscal Year 2025 School Maintenance Grant.
The State Board of Education delegates a grant for districts that qualify for school maintenance that could be in relation to building improvements, safety and security, any emergency aspects. So, you know, if a roof caved in based on a thunderstorm, the maximum is $50,000. The district has received this grant for several years. With the referendum proposed, either if there's a yes or a no, the district still needs to operate the building until there is a new building in place. For this fiscal year, the grant is written for the PA system at Manning, because that is a safety and security issue. The rough estimate is over $100,000, and the district only receives $50,000 from the state. So the additional $50,000 will be coming from local funds.
And it's a matching grant?
It is a matching grant.
So we can't, we won't get 50 grand if we only spend 40?
Correct.
So it really has to be something over 100?
It has to be over 100.
Any questions, other questions? Okay, we're going to move to our action items. With our first, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Countover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we'll move to our second. The chair will entertain a motion for the authorization for submission of the State of Illinois Fiscal Year 25 School Maintenance Project application as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Countover?
Yes.
All right, and the motion carries. And we'll move to our superintendent report.
Oh God, I have so much I want to share. I'll keep it brief, though. Time me. Please don't throw water on me either. Maybe? If I go over, if I go over four minutes, you can throw water on me.
Carlos is timing you, Jack. I just saw him.
Okay, here we go. So first of all, the NISH ratings came out, which is the ranking system that we do the worst on, and we had an A-plus rating. And this is before the current incredible data has been calculated. So it's a year in arrears, and we got an A-plus rating. I think we were ranked 25 out of 800 districts in the state, so top 3%. It's incredible. That's before the year we just completed, because the ratings come out before they get this new data. So that's amazing. The Illinois State Board of Education gave us their preliminary data, and that's the Illinois State Board of Education. If you look at any ranking system, that's the one you probably should look at, because it factors in a number of different criteria, including most importantly, student growth. So not just the bottom-line test number, but the growth we're seeing in our students. Miller did an exceptional job, they moved up approximately 15 points. According to preliminary information, they'll be five shorts, five points short of exemplary. That isn't due in part, not on their, it's a district-wide performance measure, it, the criteria includes performance of students in fourth grade, even though they're K1 building. But they had exceptional growth. Manning, incredible growth. They will be exemplary for the first time in seven years, and double-digit growth again, a testament to a great work done at Manning. The junior high went from the 65th percentile according to the State of Illinois to the top 1 percentile. Now, based on last year's data, the highest junior high score in Illinois, and we looked at every one of them, was 91.7. That was the highest rating for a junior high in the state of Illinois, 91.7. The junior high had a 94.75 score, three points higher than the highest score that was attained last year. We have to wait till all the data comes out, but according to Illinois State Board, we went from the top third in the state to the top 1% in the state. Incredible. And then the high school scores, in the seven years they've been doing this, the high school is the number one cumulative score in the state of Illinois out of 650 schools. It's off the charts, it's entire community working together, support from the community, school board, admin, teachers, support staff, parents, students. When you have clear targets, when you work together as a cohesive team, when you put the kids first, when you put their learning and their wellbeing first, when you take care of their emotional needs and their relationships with these kids, not that we're perfect, but then you get extraordinary results. We can put, coming out October 31st, on the internet for the entire world to see, we should be one of the top, if not the top performing school district in Illinois. And the junior high will be the most improved school in Illinois, and I would bet in the top 1%, if not number one.
So we have...
That's a team effort. That was less than four minutes.
But it'll be clear postings of that. I know that's something that people ask, where can I find this information? So we're clearly...
We will post the heck out of it. You can bet on it, we'll make a video about it, we'll put it out everywhere, but then any person in the world can go on the internet, go to Illinois School Report Card, Westmont Junior High School, see the graph of 3,000 schools where our school is in the top 1%. Carl?
October 30th.
Yeah, I wanted to give you all this information tonight and do a PowerPoint, but Carla told me you're not supposed to do that, right? The state says...
October 30th is the official time that this will be released.
I don't, I don't...
I, I want to echo what you said, like we've been here, you know, when we were looking dire with the pandemic, and, you know, even just after, where we hear, you know, it's hard to... hard to stay in that cheerleader mold because you hear people that say, what are we doing for our kids? You know, we're not performing as well, we're not doing this, and it's easy to just criticize and say what we're not doing, but in the meantime, you had students and teachers working their butts off and continuing to do that. And this is what it's all about, not just to criticize, it's to uplift. And so congratulations to the district.
To the district.
To everyone, heart to heart, so.
And staff attendance has been excellent, student attendance has been excellent. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? So, and as we take that, our board reports. We've, we've talked about it before, just our, I'm going to bring up the conference and working hard to still be organized with that among all the other things that we're still doing, but we will be presenting some of the work we've done as a board. One with our hiring, what is our main job as a board? Well, we're going to speak to that process with the, the, on the, one of the panels of how our district went about that. And I think one of the one things that Patricia Vinear and her staff with IASB, what they were really astounded by is what our commitment to getting community involvement in our selection process. So we've been asked to share that, and then we also have been asked to share our work with the evaluation tool and how we did that. So as work as a school board.
So you're saying we've been invited to-
Be on a panel.
Be on panel at the, when was the last time anyone-
Two different panels.
Yes.
When was the last time anyone from this school district was speaking at the-
Triple I?
-school con?
Probably Jack.
Yeah, Kevin and I presented about nine years ago.
That's interesting.
I'd say there's probably more to come.
We are a rising district in the-
With the data that will come out October 30th.
Yeah, so that's good to know. Oh, and since we're on the topic-
Yes.
I seem to remember that after the last joint annual conference, we said that we needed to get an agenda item on one of the meetings before the next joint annual conference so we could discuss who's going to do what from this board.
Exactly. And so that's my reason for-
Were you ready for this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we had an email today, just with the, that they have the agenda out, even that some of the earlier workshops is something that we have to, one, identify if that's something we want to participate in. And, you know, speaking with Shannon and just because there, there's some of the early workshops, one with timing, can we even go, and that there's a cost to it. And so one in particular, I haven't even looked at my calendar, but I know there is an equity workshop.
They're doing it on Thursday, I think, this year, not Friday.
Yes, I think it's a Thursday, that's why I said, I haven't looked at our, but again, it's involved, we talked about our board saying, if there's one, we don't all have to attend, but if there's something that we want to get out, even with some of the workshops that are included with the conference, if there's, we're looking at Anthony, that's what we're turning to next. If there's something that we want, we all want to get out of it, just to be a little bit more coordinated, we take small steps to look at some of the included workshops to say, hey, I may not, I may want to attend one, but what are you doing and what can we get out of it as a whole? And it has been helpful, you know, I'm going to make Leah speak to it. It has been helpful as we gather information and see what other districts have been doing out there and, and their expertise. I, I liked the conference, I liked the opening, the opening-
Keynote.
Speaker, keynote speakers, but also just hearing practically, what are people, what are school boards going to attract other community members? What are they doing to, when they come to evaluate their superintendent? I think it's all great information, so.
Did you say the agenda is available?
I believe so.
It came out today.
Yeah. Can we just create a Google Doc and like link to the agenda, and everybody puts their name and what they're interested in, and then divide and conquer?
Yeah.
I'm saying this as a suggestion, but I can't go because I'm going to be out of town, but I feel like-
Yeah, I think so, because it's, there are some times, I think some of us say we can only go one day or things like that, so I just feel better if like I know if I can't attend Saturday that you are, and you're going to that, and you're going to come back with information. So I think that's a good idea.
And one spot, I think that's helpful. I can create the doc and share it.
Can you make the Google Doc?
I'm going to feel better about that.
If you can make the Google Doc, that would be really helpful.
I'll make the Google Doc, I'll make a little table.
Rock on.
I'm on it, guys.
Any other, okay, reports? I think we have, we return to our public comment. Thought we did. Yes, we're done with that. All right. I know we're all looking.
Looking at you.
All right, we'll continue our future meetings and events. Elementary, oh, yes, we have another. Elementary family math night.
It's 13 today.
Didn't we have that?
It was last night, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's, that already happened.
Okay, because I attended it, and I thought, it's actually fine.
I was there.
The kids like beat me in the challenge, and so I went home.
Not bad. Who beat you?
I have to get his name, but Lindsay Peterzak knows, because I was just like, I'm going to guess it right, and I didn't. Sorry. PR committee meeting, October 19th at 6:00 PM, South School.
Is that October 19th?
Should I pull off the website?
Wait, shouldn't it be, shouldn't we try to put all those before these?
Sorry, maybe this-
It's Saturday.
Okay, we'll update if there's a change.
Maybe something.
We have the Manning and Miller Monster Mile, October 21st.
Right.
At 8:00 AM.
No, no.
Is that the 19th?
19th.
What happened? I wonder if my changes didn't click.
Okay. Our next CUSC board meeting.
I bet we get that one.
October 24th.
October 22nd.
Changes to change.
Okay, there have been some changes, sorry. It's like, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Take the one, there must not have changed.
Okay, we'll be here at Village Hall.
Check the calendar.
Right.
Yeah?
Yes.
That's our, that's our message.
Right. These are some of the events coming up. We'll update our calendars, make sure you have that correctly.
So the 15th, we have at the high school, a 6:30 at Town Hall meeting.
Yes.
And then the 20 seconds, the board meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The 15th, yeah.
We know that. So that, it's one of our last Town Hall meetings for like our informational meetings, October 15th, 6:00 PM.
6:30.
6:30 PM at the high school.
When is the PR meeting?
I'm going to look in. I think it's before the next board meeting.
Yeah, it's before the next, that's what we try to, yes.
That's what we tried to do, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, oh, it's the evening up, right, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
So just to reiterate-
22nd, then.
Yep.
On the next PR committee meeting is going to be before our general board meeting at half 30.
So October 22nd, you have a finance committee.
We just had PR.
Sorry, that, that's on the website.
Let's, let's roll back, let's just come back to this, okay?
Yeah. We will update and send it out. But at the very least, the next board meeting is the 22nd, next Town Hall meeting, the last one, that we have, October 15th, 6:30, Monster High School. I'm going, we're going to enter in closed session again. I just want to state that we won't be taking any action after that, we'll just be reconvening to adjourn. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, sale or lease of real property.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Jack, your folder is in there.